Meeting, if everyone will please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you. All right, good evening, everyone, on our June board meeting, and school is officially out and over, for the kids.
Yeah.
So, but, our work still goes on. Everyone's had a chance to look at the minutes of our May 2 regular Board of Education meeting. If there are no changes that need to be made, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
Motion in second, all in favor, raise your right hand. All right, motion carries.
Oh, okay.
Everyone's had a chance to look at the minutes of our May 2 closed session portion of the, our regular board meeting. If there are changes to that, we'll make those in closed session. If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Right.
Motion in the second, all in favor, raise your right hand. Do we have any additions or deletions to our agenda?
Yes, sir, we do. Item 6.1, if you'll turn to that. Mr. Curtis, when he goes over that, we'll only be looking at Fun Date, not Fun 2. So just take Fun 2 off of that description, and that's all.
Okay, I need a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Motion.
Second.
Motion in second, all in favor, raise your right hand, and motion carries. All right, matters of the public, our good news presented by Mr. Rice.
Mr. Webster. Good evening. I am here to present the Rotary Student of the Month for Pamlico County High School and Pamlico County Middle School. First, from Pamlico County Middle School, the Rotary Student of the Month is Justin Potter. The following is from Ms. Lanchy. Justin transitioned to our school at the beginning of the school year, and he immediately immersed himself in our school's culture. He participates in a variety of activities at school to include science, Olympiad, and track and field. He is a friend to all, and he is very loved by his peers. Justin has a great sense of humor, and he loves to dance to music. He always strives to do his best in and out of the classroom. We are really going to miss Justin next year as he transitions to the high school. We are so proud of him. Again, the Rotary Student of the Month for Pamlico County Middle School is Justin Potter.
You'll notice on the right inside of this, we have what we call Rotary National Core Way test, which is what we sort of live by. Wait, and we also have a coin I presented you.
Very good. And I forgot to recognize Mr. Bob Webster from the Rotary Club to help us this evening. Next, from Pamlico County High School, we have Ryan Baker. Ryan serves as one of the leaders of Pamlico County High School's Navy Junior ROTC Training Corps, where he serves as the Unit's Commander, Senior Chief. Cabinet's the orienteering team and is a key member of the Unit's academic team, which recently competed at the Navy JROTC National Championships in San Diego, California. In addition, Ryan excels in sports. He is a three-year letterman in both football and wrestling. On the mat, he qualified for and wrestled in the 2022 North Carolina High School Athletic Association State Championships. Finally, Ryan has been selected to attend two prestigious camps this summer. He will attend the Tar Heel Boys' State and the AIM Summer Seminar at the United States Coast Guard Academy. He is easygoing, cheerful, yet diligent in all his assigned tasks. His positive outlook and camped-do spirit promote an enjoyable learning environment for all. Again, the Rotary Student of the Month for Pamlico County High School is Ryan Baker. Thank you, guys. Our final piece of good news will be presented by Ms. Jackson.
Good job, guys, and thank you to the Rotary Club. So I would like to ask Ms. Zanquavia Minor to please come. I can see she's so excited about coming up in front of everybody. So if you remember, those of you that are here often, a couple of months ago, we recognized Ms. Stephanie Now for her acceptance into the Pirate Leadership Program. And as I explained then, every, every district in our region got one slot to participate in that program. And we nominated Ms. Now, and she accepted, and so she's now Assistant Principal at the middle school, and all her books, tuition fees are paid. Well, Little Bird told me that all the counties, for whatever reason, didn't use their slots. So I immediately had another person in mind, and so I emailed ECU and said, if you are going to give those slots away, I want another one. And so I talked to Zanquavia, and she had already actually, I think, applied to the School of Administration and School Leadership at East Carolina University, so they quickly transferred her to the Pirate Leadership Program. And I'm very excited that she will also have books, tuitions, tuition fees, and everything that she needs to be the Learning Acceleration Coordinator, working towards school administration at Pamlico County High School. And all we have to do is provide her a lot of love and support and all the resources that she needs to be the best possible administrator that she can. And I'm really proud of you. We go way back from when, gosh, really when I started out as an Assistant Principal, I think. But I think you are an amazing teacher. You've been wonderful for the teachers at that high school, and I know there are big things coming for you. So let's give her a big round of applause. She doesn't want to talk. Thank you.
And you guys, they'll receive good news tonight. You're welcome to stay, or feel free to.
Justin, Justin, Justin.
Awesome.
All right, a couple of comments tonight. I don't think we have anyone that has signed up for public comments, so we're going to move on to our superintendent's report. Ms. Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We will start off with the membership report. You have a copy of that. We have minus one at the primary school, minus two at Fred Anderson, minus one at the middle school, plus one at the high school. For overall of minus three, that ended on May 26. So our next one will be in August, or actually September, I guess. So then moving along, item 3.2. For such a busy, busy time, I felt like either I put it all down here, or I didn't put much of it down here. So there's really so much that we could have talked about. You notice there's not even any principal time, because they all said, well, do I talk about all the stuff from May? And I said, no, 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 we're not going to do that. But first of all, I'll just say, we are starting next week, working summer hours, our four 10-hour days off from Friday, so our hours will be seven to five. So just keep that in mind if you need to come by the office. Under end-of-year items, you know, it's, it's been very, very busy. It's still busy, as a matter of fact. Today, I attended some end-of-year celebrations at some schools where they gave, they gave out, you know, retirement plaques, Teacher of the Year awards, and other special awards that were really interesting, especially at the middle school, some, some funny ones. But I attended a lot of, and as did a lot of other people here, a lot of events, evening events, that were from transition nights to academic awards, athletic awards. But I will tell you, the eighth grade and the high school graduation was probably some of the best ones I've ever attended. They were both, both great. They were short and to the point, and they, it was just, it was just a great job for our principals and the staff at those schools that did those. So teachers are here through either Wednesday or Thursday, and they're working really hard. You go in the schools today, and they're just as busy now, just trying to get things kind of closed out. So here at, you know, the central office, you know, I wish I had a dollar for everybody that says, oh, do you even have to work in the summertime? And we do, and it's, as a lot of people sitting in the chairs out there will tell you, it's our busiest time, because while we're closing out one year, we're hiring and recruiting and getting ready for the next year, and that's what we're doing now, and looking at budgets, and, you know, what are the things that we need to do to make next year better. So we've got a lot of things that we're doing with all of that, you know, like I said, hiring, recruiting, summer school's going on, and Ms. Dixon's going to talk about that in a minute. Just a lot of work. We're looking at some, sprucing up of some areas. We're looking at increasing security in some areas, so we'll be talking to you about that, you know, with all the things that have been happening in the world. So, and one little other note that I had that I just jumped right over. You know, when I attended the academic, academic awards and scholarship night at the high school, everyone didn't say how much their scholarship was worth. Most of them did. So I was trying to take account and take notes, and I stopped at just below $300,000. And they're not even all given out yet. There's still some that will come this summer, I think, right, Mr. Delmar?
Tomorrow, so.
Oh, there you go. And it was just amazing to look at those students sitting on the stage and to know that just them, right there, they had received almost 300. It was probably over, because like I said, if they didn't give the amount, I didn't include it in my, in my accounting. And it was everything from a couple of hundred dollars to over $100,000. So we have some amazing people in our community that give to our students. And of course, we have great students, but we're just lucky to live in a community like we do, because it was a great, great night. And I think those of you that were, were there would probably agree, it was awesome. So I don't have anything under miscellaneous, so that's all I have tonight.
Any comments from any board members at this time?
The one that I was most impressed with was the, the awards night at the high school. I've been the last so many years, every year they've done it, and during COVID, and the leadership there from the school staff, the counselor, principal, was, it was the best organized and best run that I've been to in years. And they deserve a lot of credit for making it that way.
I'll follow up on that. I was, there were several board members that were at the awards ceremony, and it was a, it was a good night. A lot of kids were, had done a lot of hard work in their four years here, and it, it paid off, and there's, there's more to come. Attended Athletic Bank, we've had a lot of talented kids athletically and academically in our, our small school system. Any other comments from any other board members? All right, we're going to move on to the consent agenda. So Rachel, if I get this wrong, correct me. So with our consent agenda, 4.1, 4.2, and 4.3, we're ratifying and approving overnight trips. 4.4 is policy approvals, so we can. So with, with approval, can we have discussion? And I would like to leave it as first reading, if everybody's okay with that, to see if there's any discussion tonight.
Kathy would like to volunteer to read all those policies to us.
If, if there's discussion, it comes off the consent agenda.
Okay.
Okay.
So, so that would be up to you guys. So your, your options are, you can, you could either, before you move into adopting the consent agenda, you could make a motion to waive first reading on any policies on the consent agenda, and then if all the policies, if there's no discussion on any of those policies, then they would be finally approved.
Okay.
The other option would be, you can just leave the consent agenda as it is. This would be a first reading that you'd be approving on, through the consent agenda, and they could show up on the consent agenda again, if no issues come up between now and your next meeting.
Everybody understand that? So do we want to, if, and by all means, if, if any board member wants to have discussion on these tonight, it's just a matter of a couple motions to amend the agenda, and...
And I can watch and throw it easily.
Yep, so don't, don't hesitate if you do want to discuss any.
Do you think they need a reminder of the process that these have already gone through? Does everybody understand that?
Go ahead and, yeah, do a reminder. It'll be good for everyone.
Dr. Patrick, do you want to, sorry to put you on the spot, but this has already gone through several processes, so I just thought that might make you feel better if you heard that again.
So all of the policies that are...
The people online won't hear you.
Yeah.
Good evening. All of the policies that are before you on the consent agenda tonight are from the North Carolina School Boards Association. When we first received the drafts, cabinet, we sat at, first of all, individually, we worked through them. It took three or four days, and we worked through each policy that, that touched our area, something that we covered in our daily work. Then we came together, excuse me, as a, as a cabinet, the group of us, we discussed all of the policies, and again, as, as a group, we made any additions or suggested any changes that need to be made. Once we completed that work, then the policies went before the Policy Review Committee. We worked on that for a couple hours together, and I, I do believe that the committee worked at home as well, reading the policies and just coming with questions and things that needed to be addressed. We did have Rachel sit in with us as our counsel for that meeting, and all of the policies that are presented to you tonight have been through the cabinet and the Policy Review Committee. They believe that they are the best reflection of the policies as we need to adopt them for the school system.
Thank you. Thank you for your work. Thank you for the cabinet and staff, and our Policy Review Committee. I know that's...
A lot of work.
It's a lot of work, and thank you. So we can approve the consent agenda as presented, which would approve 4.1, 2, and 3, and it would be a first reading of 4.4, and would come back on the consent agenda in July for our next board meeting for final approval, or we can discuss now. Here, no discussion, then I'm going to ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Motion.
Second.
Motion in the second, all in favor, raise your right hand, and the motion carries. So with that being first reading, if you continue to review these and you do have questions, by all means, definitely ask, direct it to our committee, Dr. Patrick, Ms. Jackson, anyone, and we can, these will be back on our agenda for approval at our next meeting.
Okay.
So moving on to agenda item 5, instruction, Ms. Dixon.
Good evening. As Ms. Jackson mentioned, this is still a very busy time of year, even though our regular school year has ended. Beginning on Monday, June 13, Pamlico County Schools will offer summer learning experiences at all four school sites. These experiences will be in addition to the retesting and extended school year offerings previously approved by board members. We'll start at the primary school with our legislated Read to Achieve Summer Reading Camp. We have approximately 52 first through third graders who are slated to attend. Fred Anderson will be hosting a math boot camp for rising fifth-grade students. Pamlico Middle and Pamlico High will host summer bridge programs. This will be for approximately 50 select rising sixth and ninth graders, and these programs will focus on successful transitions to middle school and high school, along with some social, emotional learning supports. And finally, Pamlico County High School will host credit recovery and acceleration programs for ninth through 12th grade students. Students at all four sites will attend from 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. each day, and breakfast, lunch, and transportation will be provided. Summer staff for all four sites have been selected, and contracts have been signed, and we hope to have everything wrapped up in a nice, neat package, including retesting for students for math by the 29th. Any questions?
June 29.
June 29, yes. That will get us in our mandated 72 hours for Read to Achieve Camp, and what we've done is try to align camps at the other sites, so that we can use the same bus drivers and child nutrition staff for all four campuses.
So that will give the high school students enough time to get their credit recovery in?
We'll have 10, we'll have 10 days of remediation before we do retesting.
Good.
Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, 5.2, our CTE two-year plan, Mr. Spruill.
I know when I sent this thing with all the attachments, I figured it'd be something good for y'all to print out and read before you went to bed at night, because there's a lot of it. But each year, CTE has to submit an application for PRC 017 funds, which are federal CTE allotments, PRC 14 funds, which are state CTE allotments, and PRC 13 funds, which are state CTE allotments in the form of months of employment for board approval. In addition, every two years, and this is that year, a CLNA, another acronym, which is Consolidated Local Needs Assessment, is conducted to make sure the funds provided are aligned to the local workforce and needs. The CLNA looks at data collected from surveys, different focus groups, and CTE Advisory Committee. Another piece of data used is Pamlico County's Part 1 Data Indicators of Performance, which looks at the school performance as a whole in graduation rate, math, reading, language, arts, science, post-secondary placement, non-traditional programs enrollment, post-secondary credential, and several other areas. And again, CTE is a supplement to those, and so it looks at the entire school, the entire high school. This data is pulled from the 2019, 2020, and the 2020, 2021 school year. The data broken down into subcategories as many areas with large camps that are below the state goal. Looking at the time the data was pulled, which again was 1920 and the 2021 school year, this was at the height of the pandemic, where we started remote learning, then started back with a hybrid model of attendance, with some in-person learning, some remote, the next year started in-person, then back to remote, and then a combo. I'm not sure of the timeline of all the different modes of learning, but reality is that many of us fear was that last few years did affect their performance, and you see that in the data when you look at that first one. Looking at the strategies in place, though, school performance should have increased, but the confusion of non-traditional learning that was happening, and in ten cities, the students in general did not allow the proper implementation of a lot of the strategies in place. After looking at the strategies, most were kept, some new and grand. Some of the areas of attention are non-traditional programs, enrollment, and increasing credentials for all students. Each of you have an electronic copy of the application, the data indicators, and the narratives, and also have included a consolidated overview. And again, this was just a real, real concise of what that about almost 100 pages was, but it's looking at areas of strength, you know, relating, we learn our, our business needs. We do use the council to talk to, and our career development coordinator at the high school is, he's real proactive in the middle school and the high school, and even at the fifth grade, he's done us a couple activities there. And again, the career pathways we have are agriculture, health science, culinary arts, and again, that's a new one that we added in the last couple of years, it's become very popular. Counseling and mental health, our college and career program, construction courses, and again, that's a new one that we brought back. It's not new, but we brought the pathway back, and it's very, very popular, and the kids are doing very well in it. And honors courses are offered in the CTE program also, and we have, you know, did different credentials, and that's something we'd like to increase, and so when those kids graduate, they have those credentials. Some of the needs we looked at was our CT, our student organization, such as FFA and whatnot, needs to be worked on a little bit. Both our teachers are first-year students, and so they're still learning the ropes also, but Mr. Kerewyn has done a lot of work in helping them with that program. And again, we're going to help increase the proficiency in English, language arts, math, and science, and again, increase non-traditional program enrollments, and help with the professional development for the teachers. Because again, the last two years, a lot of professional development was either put on hold, or it was remote, and a lot of that development, or professional development, really needs to be in-person. So remote is okay, but that in-person professional development is much, much better. And again, you have the different files and whatnot I sent you. Are there any questions?
Joe, what's the status of health occupations at the high school for next year?
All right, as everybody knows, Ms. Hartson, she resigned a little year, and we have had one interview, really did not feel good about that one, and that's all we've had to apply.
But we're looking at an additional program in the CTE area, Paul, that we think that would be, we could actually yield more students from a different program, fire safety, EMT, public safety. So we're looking at that now.
Well, it, the program, based on my experience, particularly interviewing seniors, probably was more impactful than any other occupational program that we've had. Those kids that participated just had something extra, and I'd really like to see it get put back in place. I just think it was valuable. I know there may have to be something done in order to attract a teacher, and I know you've got to have a registered nurse, and I don't know what all...
Right. I think that was more about the teacher, really, in that, in that particular case. I think that teacher was the one that did help get those quality of students.
Well, I'd just like to see it.
We just did not have a lot of students out of those. I mean, we, we actually were below the federal requirement of numbers, and so we struggled.
I know that, but I think, I think there might have to be some recruiting or something done in order to, to, and maybe even do it in a modified way.
And that's really what the public safety piece is about, that it'll be similar, there'll be some similarities to that.
What do you mean by public safety?
I mean, it's a, like a EMT-type program. A lot of high schools are doing that now, and it's something that the...
A new program.
That would be a good alternative.
Yeah, that's what we're talking about, since we didn't have any qualified candidates for that.
Knowing, knowing the county and the interest of that.
That's right. We want to do programs that our students, that will have more than two or three or four students to come out of it, and then things that they can use immediately and when they graduate.
We're, we're looking at the public safety pathway, and one reason also, the health occupations, there's a limit of 10 kids that can be in that class, that's it. You can't put any more. With the EMT, you can put up to 20, so you can put more kids at one time. If one, if 10 sign up, one drops out, now you only have nine.
What kind of credentials would a teacher have to have?
For the EMT?
Yeah.
Okay, just, we've already spoken to, I've already spoken to two people right now that are interested, and to, to teach the public safety class, there's, it's a very low, they have to be an EMT, an associate, and there's something else, but to actually teach the EMT class, they have to be a registered EMT instructor, and that's the issue. There's a lot of EMTs out there, but there's not very many instructors. One that we did talk to, he is about, he's a few classes shy of it, and so we talked about, I talked to him about just offering the public safety to begin with, because he could do that and work on that other, to get the EMT going. And then I talked to an individual, it was either Thursday or Friday, he's actually a level-two paramedic instructor that's retired, and he just has to get his license renewed. So there's several different people that are interested.
I think, and that would be a good alternative, and I really think you need to pursue it strongly.
We are. It's, it's posted on our website. It's posted on our website.
Yeah, it is.
That could, that could be, there's a lot of interest in that type of thing in the county, and I understand there's beginning to be a shortage of people to do that type of work. And so this would be a gap that we could fill and really contribute, so.
And that was actually one of the things that came out of the CLNA, was to explore that EMT program.
Sounds good.
Yep, good. Any discussion or questions on the plan as presented for Mr. Sproul? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Pamlico County Board of Education approved the CTE plan for 2020 through, 2 through '24 as presented.
I'll let you do the second change.
Second.
All right. All in favor, raise your right hand. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Curtis is excited, he jumped right up.
He did, didn't he?
It's going to take a while, that's why I just popped right in. Good evening. The first item is item 6.1, which is a request for a budget amendment. I'm going to ask Tiffany if she will hand out these, the handouts for me.
This is a budget amendment to Fund Eight, the other restricted fund. At the top are the revenues. The first one is a donation from the Perry Griffin Foundation for $6,000, and this was for athletic equipment. The second one is an athletic facilities grant in the amount of $102,742. This came from DPI. This is the first time that I've seen, that we've ever received this type of grant, first time that I've known that it's ever even been offered by DPI. We were sent the paperwork, there was like a short application to complete, which Mr. Rice completed for us, and we submitted it in, and it has been approved. It is mainly for the, to work on the athletic fields, the football field, practice field, baseball field, and softball field, do upgrades and improvements to the concession stand and bathroom facilities, and also to the press box area here at the, at the football field. So it's, it's money well needed, and we'll certainly take it. It was quite a surprise that we received that. And we've already started some of the work on the football field and practice field, and so that work will be taking place over the, over the summer. So very excited about that.
The other grants that Perry Griffin provided, they would, when would they have been added in, the ones on recently?
Yeah, they were, they were in the previous amendment that I did, I think, last month or month before.
Okay, good deal.
And then the third item is a fund balance appropriation for $50,000. And then you see down below under the expenditures, the co-curricular, which is the athletics, and that's a combination of the athletic facilities grant and the Perry Griffin Foundation grant, and then the $50,000 towards the leadership services. That 50,000 is pretty much taking care of any additional expenses for this building here, which is, as far as I know, complete and has been paid for. So we're excited about that. Any questions?
Make sure that facilities grant goes to all the sports.
Sir?
Make sure the facilities grant goes to all those four sports.
It's already targeted for certain areas. We had to write it in advance.
Any more questions on this? And yeah, we do need, let's see.
Any motion to approve the budget?
Yep, let me turn my page. So any more discussion or questions on this? If not, need a motion to approve as presented?
Motion.
Second.
Motion, the second. All in favor, raise your right hand, and motion carries.
All right, thank you. Item 6.2 is a request for a special Board of Education meeting to approve financial end-of-year documents, and we do this every year. I am, would like to request that that meeting be held on Thursday, June 30th, and that'll give the finance department all the time we need to get all of our, our year-end financial documents in line, plus looking at budgets for next year with regards to current expense and capital outlay. As far as the time, I, you know, that's up to the board. It could be during the day or in the evening, it does, that part doesn't really matter. So I would leave that up to the board to have that discussion and determine when that board meeting can be held, if everybody is in agreement for June 30th.
So first of all, is June 30th, would that work for everyone?
Probably. It could be virtual, though, if you wanted it to be.
Okay, I know time-wise, Helen, me, and you are the only ones that still work. Name will work?
I can't understand, she said Thursday was good, just doesn't know the time.
Okay.
You said noon would work for you, didn't, didn't you? Didn't you say noon would work for you that day if we did noon?
So will noon on that Thursday work, if we schedule that? All right, let's, let's schedule it for 12, noon.
Of noon, okay.
Yep. And Tiffany, make sure you send out reminders ahead of the, ahead of time.
I'll give it a call, everybody.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right, so we need a motion to approve that special meeting for June 30th at 12.
Motion.
Motion, the second. All in favor, raise your right hand. All right, motion carries.
All right, thank you. Next is item 6.3, and I'm.
Thank you, ma'am.
As you know, last month, we made our formal budget presentation to the county commissioners for local current expense and capital outlay funding. This first handout you have is listing on the left-hand side of the page, you can see the budget for this year. Current expense, a total of $4 million, capital outlay, $375,000. And then the next column is the amount that we requested from the county commissioners. Current expense, $4,447,353, and that was an increase of $447,353, almost a 12% increase. And then in capital outlay, $493,364, an increase of a little more than $118,000. After we made the budget presentation, a couple, they actually recessed that meeting and met the following week, and as, to continue a budget session. And I also attended that meeting. I think everybody else was tied up in the schools and going to nighttime events, year-end events. So I went to that, and you can, I don't know how to say it, but I was kind of surprised at the, of what they came up with. They didn't totally fund it, but they did give us some, so we're, which we were thankful for. You can see on the, starting with the green section, the county adjustment to our request, this is how much less they gave us than what we asked for. Current expense, $127,353 less, but the funding will be $4,320,000. That's an 8% increase in this year's funding. And that's almost unheard of, that's huge. And then in capital outlay, they actually gave us $400,000. This year, we got $375,000, so a $25,000 increase for a total funding of $4,720,000. That's a total between the two funds of a $345,000 increase. So I'm very pleased. We'd love to have had it all, but I can't tell you the last time that we received an 8% increase in.
How much did you get last year, Steve?
Zero.
Zero.
Year before that, zero.
Might have something. So anyway, very pleased with that. We were playing catch-up all year long, and that's one reason that the request was as high as it was, is try to catch up some from the 0% increase that we received this year. So 8% out of local current expense, 6.67% in capital outlay, total increase of 7.89%, $345,000. They actually voted to approve that funding, but they won't approve their budget until June 20th, two weeks from tonight. They'll have their public hearing, and then after that's over, they'll have a discussion and then approve the budget. I certainly don't anticipate any changes in our numbers. They have already sent that document out to us, and we have that in hand. So we will wait and make sure everything's finalized, and they approve it on June 20th. I do have one other document I'd like Tiffany to hand out. She has.
I'll just say on the budget, good job with Mr. Curtis, Ms. Jackson, our staff cabinet.
Thank you.
A lot of behind-the-scenes work went on to, to help us get what we needed. And we didn't get everything we wanted, but as Steve said, I don't know the last time we got an 8% increase.
I think the board needs to understand that what they gave us this increase for primarily was to increase our local supplement.
Our supplement, yep.
And I think that that was, from my talking with individual commissioners, that's what they want to happen.
Yep.
That's the important, we want to have a local supplement that's competitive with everybody, but particularly for schools in eastern North Carolina that we're competing against.
This document that Tiffany just handed out is just some historical data. I think I've shared this with y'all before. So the bottom line in the green is next year's funding, so it certainly looks a much, a lot better than this year's and some of the previous years. So just kind of see, kind of see a comparison as to what we've received in past, in past years. Any questions on any of that? One, like Mr. Delamar said, the biggest item in that local current expense budget is trying to increase the local teacher's supplement. We are currently at, at 8%. And the request that we submitted to the county commissioners was to go from 8% to 12%. Obviously, we didn't get all the funding, but I've been kind of playing with the budget last, this, today, and then this past week. The funding that they gave us will allow us to increase the local teacher's supplement to 11% from 8% and also have some additional supplements for certain positions. Ms. Jackson, if you want, do you want to speak to that?
Well, you know, we give a signing bonus right now for hard-to-fill areas, and that's actually increased. Right now, that's EC, all EC teachers, as well as math teachers. So before we advertised what that amount was going to be moving forward, I wanted to see if there was something we could do for our current teachers, because while we need to fill these positions, we also want to show the teachers that are currently in those positions that we recognize the value that they have and that they could probably go somewhere else and get a signing bonus. So I proposed to actually the board chair and then talk to Mr. Curtis, and actually, you, you increased it even more than what I was saying. But we are looking at for, you know, all teachers, if this goes through, would be an 11% teaching supplement, which is great for this area. But for any teacher that is teaching in an area that is currently receiving a signing bonus, they would get a 15% bonus. Now, next year or the year after, if we, you know, EC teachers or math teachers are not hard-to-fill areas, then that'll be 11% like it is for everybody else. But while it's considered a hard-to-fill area, they will receive a 15%. And that will be their extra for, they're staying bonus, they'll have a staying bonus.
Pretention.
You're saying that the area priorities could change from year to year?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, we had science at one time, and now science isn't, isn't an issue for us, so that's no longer an additional supplement. So it just depends. I mean, right now, I mean, in the two years, third-grade teachers could be hard to find. So that's how we're hoping to retain, to help retain some of those hard-to-fill areas. So, Kim Potter, I know you've got a smile on your face right now because you used to teach math. So anyway, is that, that's what you wanted, Mr. Curtis?
Thank you. And this, this is obviously not finalized yet, that June 30th meeting. This is one of the things I'll bring to you, is the final revised local current expense and capital outlay budgets, and based on the direction from the board, if I need to make any changes or do anything. I know we'd like to get to 12, and I'll, you know, will certainly do my best. If that's what the board would like, I can see what I can.
Steve, you know that's what I want, but we can't, can't get there, we can't get there. But I want as much as we, we're, I've been through and studied the supplements in every county, and I particularly focused, there's a site you can go to, but of course, it's last year's money, and anybody could increase it. But this would make us among the highest in eastern North Carolina, and with the exception of New Hanover County, probably Carterick County. Craven right now is at 10. You would think that Carterick would be higher, but they're not, their supplement really is not as high as ours is right now. And I think this is, this is critical to get and retain teachers, that we pay them better than what the state pays them, because the state's salary schedule is pitiful, and we need more money for teachers. That's where, any money we got, we need to put it for teachers.
Steve, I would say definitely give us what 11, will it like? But give us the numbers of what, what we would have to do if we wanted to go to 12.
Yeah, just, you know, I'll either just look at maybe doing some, you know, cuts here and there, maybe adding some, some fund balance appropriation in addition to what's already in that initial budget, which was $100,000. So I'll be more than happy to take a look at that and see what we, see what we can come up with. One, one good thing is we've, we've got some preliminary numbers from the state now as far as our state allotments, so that gives me a better feel for, you know, what I can, I mean, people, employees I can run through state and maybe possibly move a position from local to state to free up that money.
Yeah, I'd like to see 12 as well. I like that number.
John and I both agree, 12.
Yeah.
And here's the impact, I just did some quick figuring, this is an average, of course, all of our certified employees, average salary's right at $50,000, okay? Starts at about 36 and goes up to 60 some, but average about, about $50,000. 8% supplement, which is what we're at right now, that's $4,000 local supplement. If we go to 11, that's going to be a $5,500 local supplement. And if we go to 12, it's going to be 6,000. Now, that sounds a lot better, I know the 6,000.
I like that. Yep.
So I think that'd be awesome if we could make that work, and I'll, I'll certainly work on it.
And does the rest of the board understand the, the 15% would be for retaining teachers who are in those hard-to-fill positions?
Has anybody ever done this?
I don't know, we just kind of brainstormed the other day and got to talking about it, and of course, so say next year, it could be like, Ms. Jackson said, it could be third-grade teachers. So third-grade teachers would go into that hard-to-fill position, and their supplement would increase to 15%.
I think it's really important to recognize those teachers that are in these hard-to-fill positions right now, because morale can really drop if you're saying to yourself, I'm doing this every day, I'm sticking with Pamlico County schools, and they're bringing in somebody new and paying them a giant bonus. That can be very disheartening.
No, when we discussed, the three of us were talking, I want to make sure it stays the same. So if a teacher, a new math teacher is hired for this coming school system, this school year, their supplement, if we go to 12, would stay at 12. They wouldn't go to 15 that first year, because they're a new teacher.
And they're getting a signing bonus.
They're getting a signing bonus.
They're getting a signing bonus.
They're getting a signing bonus. And that's good for two years.
Yeah. But it's, we've got to do something.
Did you say it's good for two years?
Yeah, it's split, this, this year, we're doing it split. They're going to get half the first year and half the second year. But it also went up to $12,000, so. $12,000.
To me, that would be a motivation to stay, but who knows?
Well, an individual who was getting to 15%, that would increase if it, on the right. it, on the range of, of, if we go twelve percent supplement and you go three percent more, that's another fifteen hundred dollars. So, they're getting, they would go to seventy-five-hundred dollar supplement. And I'll just say, I mean, I, my degree's in math, I'm certified to teach math. It's not the easiest field to go into.
We're interviewing currently.
I guess that's why.
Well, I, I'll just say that I agree with what Mr. Delmar said at the commissioners' meeting. The key to helping our students to achieve is putting quality teachers. You know, everything else is secondary to that.
Nothing matters, nothing matters. It's putting good teachers in the classroom, that can get results. And I, people, we're in a bottom-line business now. If you put a teacher in a classroom, particularly those kids that are being tested, and they can't get results with those kids, then this whole school system is under the gun. The school is under the gun. So, therefore, we've got to put people in there who can get results. It's the bottom line. We will never get to the point that we can offer the type of bonuses that are given in Wake County or Charlotte Mecklenburg, which I think they're like at twenty percent now or more. Is that right?
I wouldn't want to live there.
We'll never get to that point because we're a poor county, but we've got to do the best we can, and we've got to retain the teachers we got, and we've got to bring new teachers in who are, isn't that right, Kia?
That's right.
Yeah, and we had a good discussion in our committee meeting with Mr. Pierce, our folks here with our NAACP committee meeting that was last month. I've got to get my month right. It's June now, it's hard to believe it's June. And that's, that's one of our discussions, was retaining retention and advocating for teachers.
And the other thing that's really a factor that's working against us is the housing situation for new teachers coming in.
And that's working against every eastern North Carolina school system. Even Craven has a severe shortage of housing for teachers. They're building new apartments up there, but they're not even scratching the need that Craven has, and that's one of the reasons they've had so much trouble filling their vacancies. And another thing, they can't afford to live there with the rents that are so high. And we don't have anything. You, a, a teacher can't come here and rent something in Oriental or Rappahoe. Decent houses, there are no apartments. It's just tough.
We have some teachers that were here but have went to Beaufort County, and those teachers have stake in the county. They have homes in the county, they pay taxes in the county. I think it would be a good idea to reach back out and try to bring some of those teachers that left here back.
Yep, absolutely. And hopefully, unlike some other counties, that we will be able to keep our positions filled, because there's some counties close by that have a lot of vacancies, so. Let's see, that was just an update, so six point four.
Okay, six point four. I received a phone call a couple of weeks ago from county manager Tim Buck, and he started telling me about a piece of land down on three oh four that the Board of Education used to own years ago. And it turns out that the board deeded that property over to a, a local American Legion group back in nineteen thirty-four. I wasn't around then, so I don't know. But that's what the deed says.
I was.
You were? And, and what, the packet I gave you has basically all the information that Tim Buck forwarded to me, tax card, a copy of the deed. One of the interesting things in it, in the deed though, was it says that if the property was no longer being used for the purpose that it was intended, it was to revert back to the county. And it says county, it doesn't say County Board of Education or Pamlico County. So, anyway, Tim Buck thought that the best thing to do would be have both the Pamlico County Commissioners and the Board of Education sign a quick claim deed. The Board of Education do a quick claim deed to the, to Pamlico County, and then Pamlico County do a quick claim deed to the town of Bayboro. That's who this American Legion group wants it to go to. And the intent is to build, make a park out of that one point four acre lot, and maybe put up some basketball goals up there. So, that's kind of where we're at. I sent all of the information to Rachel and Brian, and had several conversations with Brian. He said that he certainly didn't see anything wrong with doing it, but it does have to have board approval, and the suggestion was made that any expenses be incurred by the county to draw paperwork deeds, recording fees, any associated cost with getting these quick claim deeds taken care of. I'd never paid it any attention until I got this phone call, and then when I go by there, I look at it, and it's, I know where it's at.
So, I got a question, Steve.
Yes, sir.
So, looking at the first deed from nineteen ninety-two, so the grantor was Dixon Cahoon post two hundred of the American Legion, and they deeded to veterans of foreign wars post eight zero nine four. But they only deeded a one-half undivided interest. Who, who owns the other one-half undivided interest? Do you see that, Rachel?
I'm looking, mhm.
This is what I do for a living, y'all, so things like that jump out. Don't know, do you? And I'm not putting you on the spot. I don't know, I mean, that jumps out immediately, because, so if this deed, this deed is for this piece of property, that's in the description. And if the grantor was Dixon Cahoon post two hundred and the grantee was veteran, VFW, where's our title? How do we have title? Are you following me, Rachel?
I am.
I'm not, I'm not trying to make it hard, but if we're going to give a quick claim deed to something, we got to own it, or, and I'm not saying we don't own it.
So, are you saying that half of it still belongs to the Dixon Cahoon post?
That first deed, that first deed in our packet in nineteen ninety-two, it says, if you look at the description of the land, then in the next paragraph, to have and to hold a one-half undivided interest and to the aforesaid lot parcel of land together with all privileges. So, that means somebody else owns a one-half undivided interest. An undivided interest means that you own it all together, so for every inch, you own half, and somebody else, it hasn't been divided. So, we can't say that that's our half and that's your half.
Okay, and that, and that, I don't know. I'll have to check what Mr. Buck can see on that.
Yeah, and this was the first time I saw this tonight, so that, but that immediately jumped out to me.
This is John's area of expertise.
Yeah, I know.
Three oh four.
Three oh four.
Three oh four, I'm sorry. When you split right there at the courthouse, you can take a left, go down three oh four. It's right before you get to that church, the one that's back off the road.
Yeah, it's on your left.
Deliverance, is it Deliverance? I think it's.
There's a, there's a vacant lot, like you turn left into the back.
There's most of the area.
There's a trailer back there where the store is.
So, the nineteen thirty-four deed, the Dixon, Dixon Cahoon post two hundred of the American Legion, the Board of Education deeded it to that Dixon Cahoon post eight hundred in nineteen thirty-four. I don't have a problem with the quick claim deed, but I think we need to clarify what.
Steve, with Brian, and see if he took a look at it, or if he was, I'm not sure where he went with it, but I can definitely follow up and see.
The good part of it is that then we would not be responsible for the maintenance and supervision of the site. It would be the town of Bayboro, according to this, which I think is, we don't, we've got all we can handle right now.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with, with the quick claim deed, it's just.
Do you have a timeline on this that you need to respond tonight, Steve?
I just told him I would get back with him. He knew we were meeting tonight and talking about it, so I just told him I'd get back.
Ask Tim about that and let me know if he knew that, I mean, because that deed is clearly a one-half undivided interest.
It is, mhm. So, I can either, you can follow up, Steve, and let me know what you find out, or if you want me to give him a call, I'm happy to do that. Do you want to pull that from the agenda for tonight, then, until we can figure out who owns the other half of that property?
Yep. So, four, six point four, we'll just table that, and we'll, we'll bring it back. It could be something, if, if need be, we could do it to thirtieth meeting. If we have, you know, again, I don't have a problem with the quick claim deed, but we need, we need to own what we're dealing.
Yep.
Want to make sure the proper deeds are.
Yeah.
Are filed correctly. Okay.
And I'm available tomorrow if I can help with that in any way, Steve.
Okay, I will probably call you. Okay, we'll go ahead and move on to item six point five. This is the contract audit the accounts and the management letter that was given to me last week by Kunt Wooton at Haywood. They're the CPA firm that does our annual financial statement, and I think you should have an electronic copy of that. And the only thing that has changed is the, the dollar amount. It's twenty, it's a total of thirty-eight thousand dollars, and I think that's two hundred and fifty thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars more than what we paid for this past year's audit. And they've been pretty consistent with their pricing, no huge increases, and they certainly do a thorough job. And like this year, this past year was thirty-seven thousand, seven fifty, so it did go up two hundred and fifty dollars or point six seven percent. They are very thorough, and I'm certainly pleased with their work, and we seem to have a good working relationship, and would like to continue that if the board would allow that, and be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions on that? Entertaining motion to approve?
Motion.
Second. Motion second, all in favor, raise your right hand, and motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to governance, seven point one, our COVID-nineteen protocols for Pamlico County schools. So, by general statute, we have to discuss this every month, and even though students are no longer in our buildings, I guess we still set the, our policies, our current protocols. But yeah, we do have summer school. Thank you for correcting me on that. So, any discussion on that, or I'll entertain a motion that we continue with our protocols as is?
Motion.
Motion is second, all in favor, raise your right hand, and motion carries. Seven point two, and this is the change to the Board of Education regular meeting scheduled. And this is for July meeting.
Can we kind of talk about why that was?
Do we, you want to, are we going to not have that one? I know we talked about it.
Yeah, last year, it was very last minute when we realized that we didn't have anything for the July agenda, because we meet several times in June. So, we did not have a meeting in July, which I know the attorney said that that's very common in school districts. So, we didn't have a meeting in July. So, looking forward now and talking with my staff, it looks to be the same type of situation could come up. And so, we thought if that's the case, without, instead of doing it last minute, we could go ahead and plan that now. The only thing I could foresee, and Kia, you jump in if you feel differently, but if we were to have some hires in July, we might would want to do a virtual meeting or have everybody come in just for close to approve some personnel if there was to be some hires. But we're going to try to get most of that done before the June thirtieth meeting, so that we can, we can approve those then, since we, if we, you know, you choose not to have a July, July meeting. Because it always falls, excuse me, I'm sorry, it always falls around the fourth holiday, and there's a lot of people that it, like, messes them up with their vacations and stuff. But now with us having virtual options, it might not be as big a deal.
So, the first Monday in July is the fourth, so it would go down to the next.
The eleventh.
Monday, which is the eleventh. So, the pleasure of the board to either keep our July meeting, or as we did last year, I'm fine if we, I guess, cancel or postpone, or whatever the right word we need to say, our July meeting, and if we do need to meet later in the month of July with a special meeting to approve personnel, we can do that in person or virtually. Any discussion on that? I see some heads shaking, yes?
So, are we going to delay it, postpone it, or are we going to cancel it in July period?
It would be, I mean, it would be canceled.
It would be canceled.
But if there was a need because of personnel or anything else that come up, we would, we would contact everybody to meet. But I'd just say that one could be canceled.
And we did this last year. Yep. Any, any discussions or comments, or a motion to approve this change as, as we have discussed, or we just move on to the next agenda item?
I make a motion to approve the chances of July meeting. And then we have something that we need to discuss to call a meeting.
Correct. Yep, correct. So, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. All right, motion carries. Thank you. Seven point three, our school calendar adjustment.
Did I say I was going to do this? Are you, okay, I couldn't remember. So, our school calendar for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, when the business office started putting everything in for next year, they realized that while the general statute for the calendar legislation has a requirement of two hundred and fifteen days, we actually had two hundred and sixteen days total for the staff, the ten-month staff. So, all we need to do is where we currently had an optional workday on June the fifteenth, we're just need to drop that one off. Nothing will change in the calendar for the kids, it's just one less teacher workday in the summer. So, we would, on June fifteenth, which you see, right now, you're seeing what it should look like. June fifteenth has now come off, and that's what we needed it to look like. We have one day too many. We tried to make those teachers work an extra day, but the business office caught us, right, Steve?
Any questions or discussion on that? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the calendar as amended.
Motion.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor, raise your right hand, and motion carries.
Thank you.
Seven point four, the fee schedule. Who's going to do this one?
It is pretty self-explanatory. You have a cop, handout seven point four, that's the new fee schedule that we need for next school year, twenty-two, twenty-three school year. We did adjust it a little bit, taking some things off that we no longer have. The principal's actually approved this, and Ms. Dixon looks over it, and I think Tiffany took a look at it compared to last year. So, it's just what we need to, and there's a waiver, they can waive, they can get a waiver if they need to, so, if we do this every year.
Any questions on this? Discussion?
So, what, what do parents have to do to get the waiver?
There's a, there's a waiver form that they can get. Mhm, yeah, they just fill it out, mhm.
Any other questions, any other discussion? If not, motion to approve as presented.
Motion.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor, raise your right hand, and motion carries. At seven point five.
You want me to do this one?
You can.
So, it is time for us to reappoint a board member to the Pamlico Community College Board of Trustees, and in conversations with Mr. Prescott, we decided that instead of just appointing someone, we'd like to bring him in and talk to him to make sure that we feel good about them and they feel good about us and representing us on this Board of Trustees. So, we had a sit-down conversation with Mr. Bob Lyons, and I think we both felt very comfortable with him continuing on the boards. As a matter of fact, he's the chair of the Board of Trustees for Pamlico Community College.
So, need a motion to approve the reappointment of Mr. Bob Lyons to the Pamlico Community College Board of Trustees?
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor, raise your right hand, and motion carries. All right, seven point six, Mr. Dudley.
I moved at the Pamlico County Board of Education entering to closed session to consider confidential student matters as provided in N.C. General Statute one four three dash three eighteen, point one one A one, and the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act, twenty U.S.C. one two. twenty U.S.C. one-two-three-two-G and G.S. one-fifteen C dash four-two. Confidential personnel matters as provided in N.C.G.S. one-four-three dash three eighteen, point one-one A-one, five and six, and one-fifteen C dash three-nineteen. And to consult with the Board of Education Attorney in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege as provided in General Statute one-four-three dash three eighteen, point one-one A-three.
All right, have a motion, need a second? Motion is second, all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. We'll be going in closed session at seven forty.
We need to approve the personnel report for action as amended and presented in closed session.
Need a motion?
Motion.
Motion second, all in favor raise your right hand, motion carries. You see our next meeting date, so the main one to remember is the 30th of this month at 12 o'clock. Man, they already, man, y'all were fast to get that put in there at 12 and we hadn't even approved it yet. Good job.
We are good. I thought we had already decided, to be honest. When I saw that blank I thought, oh no, I already told Tiffany it's that moon.
Yep. All right, so we see our next meeting dates, and so we'll be here on the 30th. And you'll see the, man, they've already got the shaded out on the July 11th.
Just in case.
But if we do need to come together in July, we will. So moving on to number nine, adjournment, I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Motion second, all in favor raise your right hand, and we are adjourned. Thank y'all.
Thank y'all.
Good night, everybody.